No, I need to. Okay.
Oh, it's been, um, this is coming out, but it just occurred to me.
Yeah.
Um, but it's gonna seem so much too much on my, um, for listening to you.
Okay.
So this is, uh, I don't know if it's gonna be fair, right?
And it's the dumbest, quite a bit.
Yeah. It's, 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 it's bouncing around, it's bouncing around.
But it's not gonna bounce back down the ladder, right?
Very, very good, man. Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Driving me back for a second year. Survived my rookie year pretty well, I think, so happy to be back. So tonight, I thought I would update you on where our department is in our curriculum review cycle. And some of the work we're doing as a part of that review. And to talk to you about some language opportunities and exciting travel experiences for our students. That have just happened and that are coming up soon. But I'd like to start by just giving you a quick staff update. So we're very excited to welcome to Walpole Middle School Ms. Liza Farquess, excuse me, Farquesson. Who is our new Spanish teacher at the beautiful new middle school. And she's doing wonderfully so well, so we're really excited to have her with us. At the high school, our French teacher Maggie Koznick is out on maternity leave. And we're happy to welcome as her long-term sub, a Walpole High School graduate, Caterina Ruda. Graduated in 2018. She was both a French and a Latin scholar at Walpole High, took AP in both languages. So she's doing great. And she's actually also studying to be a teacher at Bridgewater State. But unfortunately, she wants to be a math teacher, so we can't hang on to her in the language department. But it's so fun to have her back and be working with her as a colleague instead of having her in front of me as my student. So, all right, on to the curriculum. Oops. Somehow I went, okay, there we go. So we're in year three of our curriculum review cycle, which is our pilot implementation year. So when I was here last year, I talked to you a little bit about our process for evaluating and auditing our courses. And through that process, we identified some needs, particularly around target language reading experiences for our students. And an updated French curriculum and textbook. So we did go ahead and purchase Spanish and French novels for all levels, all grade levels at the high school. And they're written especially for language learners. And they expose students to vocabulary, grammar, but also culture and just fun stories as well. And we did purchase a new textbook series for French, which is built around themes that are relevant to our students' lives. And that come with ready-made, authentic resources for reading, speaking, and videos. That the students, and based on my walkthroughs, when I've seen some of these things, they really do seem engaged with the new material. So that's been successful so far. I thought I would just show you some of the novels that we bought. So we have Danger, Swirla Tour de France. That's some girls who see something shady going on during the Tour de France, and they follow the race to Paris. And Cinco Pesos, where we have an American family traveled to Mexico for the first time. And realized that really knowing some Spanish would be helpful in getting around the city. Arroz con cosas is about a retired chef, she's 75, and she wants to become an Instagram influencer to tell everyone about how great paella is. And Las Apariciones Engan, Things Aren't What They Seem, so another little mystery. And then some of the French novels I liked, they're. Le Papillon means The Butterfly Island, about a French girl who goes to the French West Indies, to the island of Guadalupe for the summer. And Algeriens is about a French Algerian woman who is trying to find out about her father's experience in the French Algerian War of, well, the Algerian War of Independence in the 1950s. So I think there, the kids get a sense of the French-speaking world beyond France as well. And the last one there, La Yarona de Mazatlan is about a girl who moves to Mazatlan to play soccer, and then finds herself haunted by the spooky crying woman of Mazatlan. So some fun things. And we also have been exploring a new online Latin resource there, a picture there of the characters and the readings that we've been using. Which is called Suberrani, and it follows this group of people in the city of Rome, but also throughout the Roman Empire. So some good stuff. So teachers have been working their PLCs this year, developing strategies for using the novels in class. And have begun implementing them and doing some professional development. Actually, Jen Hughley yesterday did a full-day workshop on teaching novels. And she said one of the themes, which is very pertinent to our work in general at the high school, is how to differentiate using novels. So I just got to talk to her a little bit about that today, but she's excited to share what she learned to the rest of our department as we go along. So through my walkthroughs, I've seen students listening to their teacher read the novels aloud. Have them read together in groups and discuss the novel with their classmates. And then do projects where they sort of rewrite the story in script form and act out the scenes in groups. Or to draw what they've read to show their comprehension. Spanish five honor students read a novel about the Spanish Civil War, and then they made movies about it where they wrote the scripts in Spanish, and they spoke Spanish in the films. The Spanish four honor students just finished the La Yarona book. And they just turned in this week, projects that included music videos based on the plot. Made movie trailers about the book, wrote diary entries from the perspective of the characters in the novel. And one art project, which is coming up on the next slide, just to warn you. And so far, the feedback from the students has been very positive. Like Ms. Koznick told me when she walked in carrying the novels, and they were like, ooh, I'm gonna read a book in French? You know, so it seems, the kids really do seem excited to be, gives them a sense of accomplishment to be able to read something in a language that's not there first. So that's been fun to see. And I also think the teachers did a nice job of picking novels that are engaging to the students, that they get excited about. So I'll sometimes go up to students and say, oh, do you like the book? Like, what's it about? And they're like, oh, my gosh, well, this happened, and then that happened, and she did that. So I think it's been a success so far. So there's a Spanish four honor students representation of La Yarona de Mazatlan. Mrs. Clary said she walked into her classroom and the kid had left it on her desk. And she's like, what is that? So, and then we have our AP French students posing with their graphic novels. And Mrs. Bacon looking excited to be preparing her novel for class. Okay, so other curriculum work we've been doing. It's been great to go to the new middle school, it's so beautiful, as you know. But it's been really fun to see both staffs, well, you know, come together as one. And I think, you know, I've gone and visited their PLCs. And, you know, it's really great to see them working together, you know, as one team in one building. And I think they're enjoying that as well. So the work at the middle school then has been to, you know, just now that we're in the same building, make sure our curriculum is aligned and that we're updating our assessments and rubrics to ensure alignment with proficiency, sorry, proficiency goals for speaking, writing, reading, and listening tasks. So alignment with proficiency targets, student-friendly language and communicating those targets via the rubrics. And opportunities for students to reflect on their performance has been sort of the focus of sort of updating our rubrics and assessments. And our teachers at Walpole High School have been working on this as well. Certainly, teaching for proficiency is not anything new in our department. But through the curriculum review process, it's been a good time for us to look at what we've been doing, see where we can make updates, make changes as necessary. Ms. Koznick has really worked hard in her year and a half with us to update the French curriculum. And updated all her rubrics and assessments before she went out on leave. I, as a Latin teacher, I was not taught Latin for proficiency the way we teach Spanish or French. I didn't learn that way myself. So I went to a three-day proficiency academy that was sponsored by Desi. And I actually got a spot that was paid for by Desi, which was great. So it was kind of a boot camp. And it was really great for me to sort of, in this new role as department chair, to sort of really have a thorough sort of review of all of this and what it means. And the teacher there was really, really wonderful. Her name was Rebecca Blue Wolf, and she's a French teacher at Wellesley Middle School. So she gave us loads of examples of rubrics and ideas that I could bring back. And so some of the rubrics that I'll show you are based off models that she shared with us at the proficiency academy. And just a couple of weeks ago, Rich Sturgis, Liz Clary, and I attended a one-day workshop called Empowering Students with Proficiency-Based Feedback. And we were able, the three of us together, to look at some writing samples that they had brought and use different kinds of rubrics to assess them. And we brought those back to our department as well. Other hot topics this year in both buildings have been differentiated instruction. And also the utility of AI tools in helping to differentiate our learning experiences. But also some cool tools for, particularly for world language teaching with AI. And with my Latin teachers, we've been working on updating our curriculum maps as well this year. Okay, and then just as I talk about proficiency, what we mean is what can the students do with the language in a real-life situation? And be understood by native speakers, right? And so proficiency is, it's a, it's a journey with levels and sub-levels. And so you work your way up to the top of the inverted pyramid there. So, you know, most of our students, you'll see that by the end of high school, most of our students are at the intermediate, still in the intermediate level. So it's a long process to being, you know, an advanced language speaker. So. So just some, I won't go through all of these, but here's an example of a novice low speaking assessment. And so this is kind of a new style of rubric that we've been, you know, piloting this year. And what I really like about it is that it shows, oops, it incorporates the, oh, goodness. The learning targets and what students should know, should be able to do at this level. And, but it also builds in, and this is something we've been working on incorporating into our instruction, is, okay, that's my target. How can I level up? Because the goal is, where am I going next? What more can I do with the language going forward? And it also incorporates student reflection based on teacher feedback. Okay, what am I gonna, what can I do to improve my performance on my next assessment? So these here that I have in the slideshow are examples of speaking rubrics. And I just, you know, I also like to glow and grow. What am I doing well? What can I do to grow and increase my proficiency in the language? So there's just some different ones from different levels, but they're all sort of based on that model we've been trying out. All right, and language opportunities for our students. So in March and April is National Language Exam time. So our students will be taking the National French Exam, the National Spanish Exam, and the National Latin Exam in the next two months. And through these exams, the students have opportunities to earn travel, opportunities and scholarships. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about that because we have two students this year, who, one who has already won and one who's applied for one. We continue to offer juniors and seniors the opportunity to earn the Massachusetts State Seal of Bileiteracy. So I know I talked to you about that last year, and we had some students come to be recognized. And this year, we have 10 students already who have earned the seal for the class of 2025. And I have three who are finishing up testing tomorrow. And so we have students who've earned the seal in Spanish, Tamil, Hindi, Bulgarian, Turkish, and Arabic, which is really amazing. You know, it takes hours to do this testing, so the kids are really dedicated. And actually, just sort of as a PSA, in order to test for the seal, you have to show proficiency in English through the MCAS. So I think that's a message I want to continue, to make sure our students know that that requirement's not going away, despite the fact that MCAS might not be a graduation requirement anymore, anyway. Okay, so we have a ninth-grade student, Shariya Panshaw, who is eligible, was eligible based on his past performance in the National Spanish Exam to apply for a Global Citizen Scholarship, sponsored by the AATSP, which is the professional organization that sponsors the Spanish exam. So he submitted his application before February break. And if he wins, he'll be able to attend a six-day language immersion camp in Minnesota in June. And we just found out over a break that our junior student, Will Fezzi, has been awarded the Junior Travel Award. So he's gonna get to go to Costa Rica this summer and participate in learning opportunities, but also volunteer work. So we had a student, two or three years ago, Gabby Aluigi, won the same award, so. So we're very excited. I invited Will to come tonight, but it was late notice, so he had another commitment, so. But I also did want to really thank Mrs. Bacon, who's kind of taken it upon herself to collect the National Language Exam scores from the middle school and the high school teachers every year. And to identify those kids whose scores make them eligible and reach out to them and say, hey, you really should apply for these opportunities. And so we've had some success with that, so that's been really exciting. Okay, and then here's just some pictures from last spring, where with our national exam winners of certificates and just participants. We like to recognize every kid who tried on the exam, and we give them all pins. And then last year, we recognized certificate winners in class. And then we gave medals to those kids who earned medals on the exams. We gave those out at a graduation rehearsal for the seniors. And then to the ninth, 10th, and 11th graders at undergraduate awards night in June, so their parents could be there, which was nice. And those kids who earned the Seal of Bileiteracy got medals and trophies also at graduation rehearsal. And then they were recognized at the graduation ceremony, which was really nice by name and their language, so. And then you know about these opportunities because you were gracious to support our teachers taking kids out of the country. So the French students traveled to Quebec, so thanks to Mrs. Lucas for that. First time in five years, I think, at least, that they've been able to go. So it certainly looked like winter in Quebec when they were there. And our students just came back from Chile and Argentina and had an amazing time. If an exhausting trip, it was amazing. And I had to restrain myself from putting too many pictures in this presentation from that trip because it really looked very cool. And then, excuse me, in April, we have a trip to Sicily led by Mr. Bacall. And then in July, our French students will, we have nine students sign up, which I think is a great number for the first year. And as you know, they'll be staying with French families, taking classes, and engaging in a lot of different cultural and travel experiences, including Paris. So we're very excited to be able to offer these opportunities to our students. So there's Quebec, looks very cold, kids are all bundled up. I think that's the falls at the Saint Lawrence River, and they look frozen to me, so, pretty amazing. Really cool, looks like they're participating in some traditional music there. You'll notice a shift here in the weather and the clothing. There's Chile, I think that's in Santiago, also Chile. This, they, the kids said this was their favorite part. So they went to the desert there in Chile. That actually, if you remember, like 10 or 15 years ago, the miners who were trapped in Chile, it was there in that desert. So they were there. And then this is a saltwater lagoon they went swimming in. And all the pictures that they share with me, they're all floating on their back. And they said that's because you couldn't actually float on your belly, they kept flipping them over. So it was so buoyant, so. So that was Chile. And then here in Argentina, they learned how to tango, some very cute videos of the kids tangling together. And they went to a ranch with some gauchos. And they went to a football game, and somehow they've all become Messi fans in Argentina. So, here we go, gracias.
Thank you very much, this is a very comprehensive.
I hope it wasn't too long.
Or, no, it was great, questions or comments? Scalavio.
I would just like to say it's great to see the language department is alive and well.
Yeah, we're going strong, yeah.
And yeah, no, it's exciting to see the opportunities, because again, for some kids, this is their thing.
Yeah, some kids are very passionate about it, yes, for sure. I know there's one girl in the AP French who's so excited to get to go to France this summer and live with the host family. And, you know, really spend some time there using her French, so. Really, you know, proud of our teachers for taking this on, too, yeah, it's great.
Any questions or comments? Dr. Goff.
Yeah, thank you, great presentation.
Oh, thank you.
It's so great to see all the trips. But I think it's also important to note the work the Foreign Language Department is doing in terms of differentiating instruction. You know, I think sometimes that we think of, you know, English, math, but, you know, Foreign Language Department is really doing a lot of work. And it supports, you know, our strategic plan and one of our pillars of teaching and learning, so thank you.
Thank you, yes, definitely been a focus of our, you know, our half-day curriculum time this year. What are ways we already differentiate, what are ways we can keep trying, so, yeah, thank you for that. Yes?
I also wanted to say I absolutely love the trips that you're doing. I think it's such a great way to, you know, have kids be excited about a language, just to immerse themselves like that. And travel is just such a wonderful opportunity. I just got back from Costa Rica.
Oh, you did?
Really funny, because the last few breaks, I've gone to Spanish-speaking countries, and all of a sudden, all my Spanish from years ago is all coming back. I just hadn't had a lot of opportunity to practice. But my daughter and I were trying to talk, and she's taking Spanish now, too. And it was funny, because there were certain things I was saying, and I would come out with words. And she's like, you just made that up, right, Mom? I don't think so.
It's way back there in your brain, right?
Permanecer, it just popped out of my mouth, and I'm like, oh, yeah, I learned that years ago. So it's just such a great way to learn, and I think it's great that you give the students opportunities like this. It brings, you know, something that they're learning in classroom life, and they really understand it. And it's so nice when people, when you make an effort when you're traveling, to chat with people.
To try, yes.
So welcoming, and, you know, it's just great to have a conversation like that and represent your country, that you're open to other languages and stuff, so, good job.
Yeah, thank you.
I think further, Ms. Rogers.
I just think it's cool, too, that these kids are gonna go to another country and immerse themselves in it. I feel like I would have been really intimidated to do that as a high school student.
Yeah, it's a long way to go.
Really good, like, life experience, I think, with the other presentation, too, about them taking the train. These are such amazing life skills that you guys are providing for them to be ready to go off into the world.
Right, even just navigating the airports, I mean, they spent eight days in two very big countries. So a lot of their travel was hopping on small planes to go, you know, from city to city within a country. So those are all important skills as well, I think, yeah.
One question I had, because we've been asking everybody sort of once. We have AP language offerings still, correct?
We do, we have AP Spanish, AP French. And I don't teach AP Latin anymore, but I do have a dual enrollment class. So my Latin four students are enrolled at UMass Boston for three credits. They don't ever go to UMass Boston, but I coordinate with the professor who's in charge of the program over there. So they are doing college-level work, but there's more flexibility with the curriculum that I can follow because I'm not tied to the AP curriculum, but they're still. And at the end, you know, they get credit for their year's work, literally three credits from UMass Boston. And it's less than $200 for three credits. So, and that's something they can have forever and take with them, certainly to a state school. Private colleges are getting a little pickier about dual enrollment credits, but, but still, yeah.
That's great, we found, for better, for worse, it's one of the metrics that we're judged upon.
Oh, okay.
Some of these things, so have you, do you, in a general way, do you see sort of a leveling of students taking those? Are more folks taking the AP than before?
Our AP, I think in general, I think, something that I've noticed in my 20 years at the high school now is we have, we have expanded so many wonderful opportunities, so many different classes that kids can take at the high school. And certainly with like a big STEM push, I think not as many students as used to stick to four years of language in the high school. So I do think across the board, for Spanish and French would be level five, for Latin, you know, year four. I think it's harder for kids, maybe they have a lot of competing interests. But we still have really strong students take AP Spanish and AP French. But I don't think those numbers are necessarily growing, if that's your question, yeah.
Along those lines, I'm curious if, when, I assume there are presentations to sixth-grade students about their language choices?
Yeah, actually, you know, because this is the first year that we haven't had exploratory language at the middle school. That's actually a good point you raised for me to consider, talking to the teachers of the middle school about how to do that. And talking to maybe to Carrie Ruggero about a way to talk to the kids about their choices, because they won't have that.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it would be amazing for students to see a lot of what you showed us tonight in terms of like what possibilities open up to you through language study. And I also think it would be really nice for the students who already have a background in a language other than English to be aware of Seal of Bileiteracy from an early, you know, in early grade, and for their families to be aware of that. So, yeah, I would encourage that sort of opportunity for kids and maybe some follow-up with the families. Because sometimes, sometimes parents will say, well, I know French, so that's what you're taking, right?
Right, right, and they don't, yeah.
Or whatever, but I think it would be really great for kids to see that regardless of what language they choose, there are all these opportunities.
So many exciting things, yeah.
You know, travel and, you know, certifications and scholarships and all kinds of camps, right? Like, I had no idea that all that existed, so.
Yeah, and we have eighth-grade parents night, next week, so I'll definitely mention these things then. But, yeah, I hadn't thought about the middle school piece yet, so that's a good point.
Further questions or comments? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, thank you all.
See you soon. Moving on to our next order of new business, the Walpole High School Competency Determination. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Hahn will give us a first reading, I believe, of the Walpole High School competency determination.
Yeah, so I'm gonna do a quick review of what you already have in your packet. I want to provide an update on the changes to the state's competency determination requirements and introduce Walpole High School's proposed policy in response to these changes. So as you all know, with the passage of the ballot two question in November, Massachusetts students are no longer required to pass the MCAS to graduate. However, students still must complete coursework that demonstrates mastery of state academic standards in English, mathematics, and science as outlined in the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. This is now the foundation of the competency determination process. So while MCAS remains a requirement under, excuse me, while MCAS participation remains a requirement under federal and state law, and scores will continue to be used for accountability, the state's Seal of Bileiteracy, as I just mentioned in the last presentation, inserts in scholarships. The responsibility for verifying competency now falls on individual school districts, which is why I'm presenting to you tonight. To address these new requirements, we've drafted the Walpole High School Competency Determination Policy, which is included in your packet for the first read tonight. I'm gonna point out four what I believe are key points, and certainly welcome questions or comments at the end. Students must fulfill both local graduation requirements and the competency determination. Graduation requirements remain unchanged. Students must complete the designated coursework outlined in the Walpole High School Program of Studies. In fact, what you have in your packet in that table, I intentionally left in the table form, because that's how it's actually presented in the Program of Studies. Competency determination certification will require students to earn a passing grade in Grade 10 English coursework, earn a passing grade in Algebra I and Geometry coursework, and earn a passing grade, and in your packet, it reads Biology and Physics. And there's been conversation about adding Chemistry or Technology and Engineering coursework. When out of district or transfer students come to Walpole Public Schools, the district will certify all the coursework to ensure it aligns with the state standards and confirm students' mastery of the required competencies. We understand that this transition places a significant responsibility on the district, requiring clear procedures for verifying competency. We're committed to a fair, consistent, and transparent process to meet this state mandate while maintaining rigorous academic expectations for all of our students. I know for many of you, you are reading this for the very first time, so I welcome any questions or feedback you may have regarding the proposed policy. If there's any outstanding concerns that we can't address tonight, or if there's a question that you have that I won't be able to answer, I'll work with Dr. Goff to provide follow-up responses at our next school committee meeting. I also just want to note that this was developed in collaboration with Principal Embush, Dr. Quealy, Mrs. Dolan, our Director of Guidance, Dr. Goff, of course. We also read probably, estimating here, about 25 to 30 other drafts of other districts competency determinations. Of course, went to several training, or not training, guidance seminars offered by Desi. There is no clear single, as of today, this could change, there is no, there is no template or form that Desi encourages every district to adopt right now. There is some stuff coming out on this date, a reason as well as yesterday that came out, that there's some potential requirements in coursework they're discussing. So this could be different next year, I suppose, but as of today, Dr. Goff and I thought we wanted to move forward, as most districts are, presenting and getting a vote by the school committee on our proposal for the high school competency determination.
And this is pretty similar to all of the other districts that we have met and spoken with. We almost have this like shared dot going around with every, every school district in it.
I think it seems kind of fairly intuitive, right? The competency areas are where the tests would have been, so.
Yeah.
It's a pretty linear thought process there. Other questions or comments, Ms. Nietzsch?
The requirements under number one here have not changed, correct? These are what the requirements always were?
Yes.
In the Program of Studies?
Yes, correct. And that's what, that's what I was saying, that that actually is right from our Program of Studies, you know, cut and paste. It's the second part, that is new.
Just a change. My second question is, do you know, are we as a district or a school committee under an obligation to review this annually? Or on any sort of timeline?
That I don't know. Dr. Goff and I spoke about this, if you noticed, the last part there says, approved by Walpole School Committee on this date. We intentionally left that blank, because that's an area that has not been concrete. You must have a vote by this date or. It must, you must have a vote by this date or it must be. There was, there's actually some districts in that section that have it as of May 1st of this year, and then there's others actually are waiting till next year to have that vote through. So I don't have an answer on that, that has been asked in the FAQs. I'll follow back up around that question, but I don't have, and as we discussed, we don't have a perfect date sign.
Yeah, I ask because it seems to me that, because this is sort of new territory, it, it, this shouldn't be the type of thing where we vote to approve it and then it sits in a file cabinet for three or four, or five or 10 years, right? So, um, my, my recommendation or my suggestion would be, once we have something voted, that we make a point of either reviewing it during policy subcommittee or kind of annually during our group meetings.
Yep.
Full committee meetings, I should say. Thank you.
Ms. Galavan?
So just to be clear, a, a student who's a senior this year would be under what impression? Like, would they be under the impression that the graduation requirements are what spelled out in, in position one here?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yes. So the, as of November, the MCAS, passing the MCAS assessment was no longer a graduation requirement. And it did not start, to your point, retroactively for sophomores. It started for anyone actually under the age of 21, 22, or perhaps, depending on the legal interpretation beyond.
Correct.
Ms. Rogers?
In the competency, competency determination, the passing grade in the equivalent of Biology or Physics, you said, or possibly?
Yes.
Technology, and what was the other one?
Yeah, thank you for asking about that, I do want to clarify. So in, when, when we submitted this draft, those were the two that were agreed upon in the, in the work, in the, the, in the group that I, that I met with and worked with. Since then, the high school came back and said, well, actually, you know, Chemistry is, and then that would also include Technology and Engineering, which is why I added that, I mentioned that. So since this was a first read, what my suggestion was going to be, that I would, when I come back, depending on your feedback, I would include in the second read, Chemistry and Technology slash Engineering as, as an option for that as well.
Great, thank you.
Other questions?
Did you say an answer or?
Yes.
All right, just to clarify, so students are still taking the MCAS?
Yes, they're required to, still.
They're required to take it, it just doesn't affect whether or not they can graduate?
Correct.
It affects our accountability, participation rate, and scholarships, like students that might leave them for scholarships.
We just should make that clear.
Yeah.
So parents understand and the messages.
We're going to use this opportunity before MCAS, you know, to take your votes and to get information out. But principals also, we've also been working with principals, because we think that messaging will also come from them. It's been a conversation at all, at all of our levels, especially at the high school. I met with an English cluster today, and we were in that part of our agenda was talking about how English teachers are getting our 10th graders to understand, you know, the importance of MCAS and all the, and the ways that we still will utilize it and that it's still a requirement. So we're doing it at the classroom level and we will get more information out to parents.
Right, yeah, I think the parents should know, because some people might think, hey, we voted for this. Don't worry about the MCAS kids. We don't want that to happen for our district, that would be.
I agree 100%.
Yeah.
Further questions? Ms. Galavan?
Related to Jen's point, I think it's important, I think that, you know, sometimes people concentrate too much on the scores that the kids are getting. I think the results of the MCAS tell the district a lot about what's working well and what's not working well, and what needs to be, you know, taught in more depth. So I think it, it tells the district an awful lot of information that, that hopefully people will continue to take seriously for that reason. Because I think it's one of the things that makes us a strong district in terms of how we analyze the data and adjust or adapt our teaching according to that. But my quest, so I just wanted to sort of reiterate what Jen was saying. I'm looking at the graduation requirements and thinking about the kids in special education. And I know that, that in general, there is a way for many of our special ed students to attain a diploma. We're still on that basic path, is that not true? Or do we have, do we have a lot of kids who can't meet the graduation requirements, I guess?
No. The only, I want to be careful how I word this, the only special education students that have struggled to meet our graduation requirements is our severe special ed students. Typically, part, part of our career and education program, so they get a certificate of completion, they get recognized as part of our graduation process. But even, even when MCAS was a requirement, we had, I, I've been here for 15 years, we've never had a student not graduate, because they've been unable to not pass MCAS or the CD requirements or other paths, and certainly not been able to, no one's not been able to meet our graduation requirements as well. And all of our special education courses that meet the requirements as listed here will continue to qualify for CD and graduation.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything further? So I think we're looking at this as a first reading.
Yes.
Understanding however that we did a lot of work on this, looked at a lot of our colleague districts around us. So for those interested parties who may be very interested in this for this year, this is a good benchmark as we look forward, but we will, our next meeting is March the 13th, and so we'll ratify this with any additions or further discussion at that time.
And as Ms. Rogers asked about, I will, I just also want to point out again, because it's not in here written, I apologize, I will also update the, about Chemistry and Technology and Engineering, no one has a problem with that. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you. Moving on, our last item of new business for this evening is we need a vote to ratify the memorandum agreement between the Walpole School Committee and the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees Local 93, Council 93, Local 1957, our custodial and maintenance units. So in your packet you have the MOE, which has sort of the, the highlights of what this new contract is. It's a very, I think it was a great process, we heard about in executive session last meeting through our agents, we were able to quickly come to an agreement. Our custodial workers do so much for the physical plant of our buildings to make sure that all the work of learning can be done. I think we, we often talk, even though we're a few years behind with COVID in the rearview mirror, they were on the front line, so the entire process, keeping the buildings safe and open at a time when we didn't really, what was going on as far as the pandemic was concerned. So they're, they're an incredibly valuable part of Walpole Public School family, and you can see that this was a good agreement, mutually beneficial to all parties. And once ratified, it'll end up on our website, as all our other contracts do, as public documents. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the MOE? Ms. Galavan?
I'd just like to commend Mike Frischa and the custodians for, first of all, the work that they do. They do it so well, and I think they came to a very fair agreement. And I think we want to be known for fair agreements. So, um, you know, I'd be more than happy to make a motion to approve the agreement between the Walpole School Committee and the custodians, the custodian union.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Galavan, second by Ms. Nietzschel, all those in favor? Repose, abstain, pass unanimously, 5-0-0. Excellent, thank you very much. We would have had them in, but I think that the principal parties are on the job this evening, so. Testament to their work ethic. We now have our superintendent's report.
Yes. So I hope you had the opportunity to enjoy February break. It's like this week we had a decent stretch of weather, so I don't know if we can cautiously say we're out of the woods yet, but if so, the last day of schools anticipated to be, you know, Friday, June 13th. So we'll see if we can keep it on that Friday. March is promising, you know, March Madness will begin, it's a busy, busy month. We've got a ton of school events, winter sports, we've got, you know, playoffs, school plays, concerts, elementary parent teacher conferences, you know, there's just a lot commencement of spring sports. So just make sure, you know, to check the principal e-notes in our district calendars, because it's pretty, pretty chock full. And then MCAS dates are also included in those resources for the principal's semours. And March, March 8th is an early release day. Last Friday, or the Friday before the break, we had a wonderful legislative breakfast at, oh, sorry, it was on Thursday, at Walpole Middle School. And that brought together our local legislators and members of school committee, central administration, and a lot of town officials to discuss really the opportunities and challenges within Walpole Public Schools. And several students from the high school superintendent cabinet played really an integral role. I thought they developed, delivered an excellent presentation that showcased both their experiences and their perspectives. They, they were wonderful, and I thanked them for, for taking the time, you know, to meet, we met several times before they presented. And following the meeting, they had the opportunity to tour the middle school, because they hadn't done that yet, and with myself and Principal Ruggero, highlighting all the innovative learning spaces and the resources. So it really is a wonderful morning of collaboration and advocacy for our schools. The students did tell me that they wanted a do-over, they wanted to actually come back to the middle school and do a do-over. They were so, so impressed, so. Speaking of the superintendent's cabinet, I handed you an article from the Searchlight, that's the Walpole High School student newspaper, and that highlights some members of, some other members of the student superintendent cabinet and their efforts to revive the Green Team. So it's really a great article, I want to hand it out for a read later. And I'm really proud of the work they've accomplished so far, they've really taken that focus area and they ran with it. For the class of 2029, our current eighth grade students, Walpole High School is currently accepting applications for STEM Academy. And all information, including the online application, can be found by visiting WHS STEM Academy. Jambreno included in hers, I'll include it again in next week in my, my semour. The deadline is May 16th, and any questions can be emailed to Mr. Brusini. I know favor, I'm not going to double hers, I talked about the eighth grade curriculum night at the high school next Thursday. We've got drama going on as we speak, but I also just want to wish the Drama Club good luck on Saturday. They're going to perform in the preliminary round of the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild Drama Festival. That's going to take place at Norwood High, Saturday, March 1st at 12:15, so. Festive luck, or do we say break-a-leg? Break-a-leg. And then finally tomorrow, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents is hosting a legislative breakfast in Milford. There'll be approximately 49 districts and collaboratives participating. And school committee members were also invited to attend. So it really gives superintendents and gives all of us the opportunity to discuss the current needs and, and key priorities in our schools. And it also allows superintendents to share their concerns directly with our legislators, just really giving them valuable context of what's going on in our, in our school districts. So I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Questions or comments to the superintendent? Ms. Galavan?
Yeah, I wanted to say that, having attended the breakfast, I just was amazed at those students. That was my favorite part, I mean, it's nice to hear adults talk, but to have it come from the students, I just think it made such an impact. I hope you got the pictures?
We did.
Okay, I hope we put those in the newsletter, so all the parents are, you know, they understand that not only are adults presenting, but at a young age, students are advocating. I mean, it was just really quite amazing, and I think I've said before, public speaking was not my favorite thing, and it's taken me a long time as an adult even to get used to it, but these kids are up there, like hitting it out of the ballpark, and I, it's just amazing. So such a skill, and I, I think we should really commend them for that, so, yeah.
My favorite groups is cabinet.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Further questions or comments? Ms. Galavan?
Maybe just a note from us, specifically to them, would be a nice thing, just, you know, just thanking them specifically for that, because they were amazing. And, um, you know, I, I think it would be nice for them to receive a message that we really thought it was special, and, and really well done, so.
Great, I'm still hoping to plan to bring the whole cabinet to school committee. We have a meeting in two weeks, so we're going to, we're going to take a look at that, just to be recognized.
Good.
I like the way that you presented it, that each of them could give their piece. Like, I thought that was really nice, and I think it was moving to have all of, not only did it keep things moving, but it was moving to hear all of them.
And keep it timely.
Yes.
Right, you know, sometimes they want to like, nope.
They all got to say their piece.
Yeah, scripts, so it was good.
Mr. Buck, can I make an unrelated, and I should have sent this to Dr. Goff to be included, my apologies. Walpole's also participating on Saturday in the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education Job Fair. From 10 to 2, we participate every year, myself, Mrs. Austin, and Mrs. Winslow will be attending. I share it tonight to encourage anyone from our community who is interested in applying for jobs in education, and we welcome them to attend the job fair as well. It's from 10 to 2 at Brookline High School this Saturday. It's a great event, a lot of districts are represented, we're one of them. You get a lot of pens and hand sanitizers and all sorts of fun things, and, and come visit our table if you come by.
Thank you, no, thanks.
Very good. Seeing nothing else, we'll move on to old business, beginning with the budget update. We have, we do have an update to give you in the last few days. Thanks to some dialogues that Ms. Galavan, Ms. Nietzschel, myself, and basically the whole body has had with our colleagues on the select board, we have been able to get word that our 1.2, 1.3 billion dollar deficit right now, there is an opportunity by working with the town side of government to bridge that gap and cut it in half with a $650,000 infusion of funds in the, at this, I know we just got the phone memo from the town administrator about an hour or two before this meeting, but with an infusion of funds similar to the one we received this fiscal year in the fall at town meeting. We know, um, we continue to, just to kind of set the table for the discussion, we continue to look at our own budget, and we have some decisions to make, and there are a number of factors that still are outstanding. I think we've, we've talked about, every budget cycle, we talk about how the, the calendar doesn't, never really jives for us to have all of the pieces together, the starting point. So we still have very productive negotiations with our teachers, our largest union, which we're doing week, weekend and week out on Wednesdays. We have the possibility of extraordinary circuit breaker relief, we'll get some, some signal of what that number will be, probably, I believe, Mr. Fisher had said, late April, which is quite close to town meeting, but still before town meeting. And then in the summertime, we'll, we'll understand fully, by about April, we'll have the House's version of the budget, and we'll see what the local aid number will be. All of those things have a strong and dramatic impact on our own budgets, especially the, how we address that gap. So there's a, a number of moving parts. I know the next meeting for the finance committee is on Monday, where they'll be looking at this and discussing it with a number of members of the finance committee. Leadership were not available to meet with us in a small group this week. You know, but they, they will have the, the proposal from our board and the select board of bridging that $250,000, $650,000 gap as well. So we're on our way, we're not out of the woods yet, but I think there's a lot of color to be had in the discussion if anybody else wants to add additional color to that. That's sort of, that's where we are right now, so we'll continue this process, and we'll probably have funding updates in all of the other meetings. We have about five between now and town meetings, so there will be continued updates as this goes forward. Anything else? Move on, middle school building update?
No, we don't have Mark here. Well, there was a vote to approve field work and some road work in the middle school. So that's, that's where we're at, that's, that's the next piece, and I think we'll start that soon.
Excellent.
I think that's going to be one of the last big votes, they said, that might be the last.
Yeah.
At committee.
Yeah, it's hard to believe we're, we're into landscaping season almost.
Yes.
High school project update?
Yes, a couple of things. This week they continued with, with footings and foundation walls for the new field house, along with completing the rerouting of the sewer line. There was a meeting at noon today, just to talk to the Science and Technology Department that I was on, that, talking to just where to move the equipment, that's a whole feat, right? You know, to, to, and to move out when the seniors graduate and how to coordinate all that, so they can get started in the science rooms sooner rather than later. And then at 2:30, we had another meeting on the vinyl wall graphics, which Jen participated in, because I trust her implicitly, because that is not my strong suit. because that is not my strong suit. So it's much less, it's like eight, I think it's eight designs, you know, compared to the middle school. But really looking at the science piece, I think there was student services, the drop zone, and then there was another room.
Sensory.
Sensory room. So taking a look at that. And they have some great ideas, so they're just in, this was just the preliminary meeting to take a look at it. But I think knowing what we've learned from the middle school, it makes it a little bit, you know, more feasible. So it's good. So thank you for attending those meetings.
Thank you for letting her pick the graphics. I think we all appreciate that. Ms. Rogers?
So are those graphics and things just going into the renovated spaces? Or they're going to be in other parts?
The renovated, like when the science room is renovated for the wall, so the wall's not completely bare.
In the hallway.
The hallway, in the hallway.
Not in the. The drop, the drop zone.
Yeah.
The student service center looks good, you know, what they went, like what they're. So when the students come in, there'll be a nice wall graphic there.
Talks a little bit about paint colors too, making sure, you know, where the drop zone was, that it wasn't a whole wall of dark blue that would be too much. But that there was enough interest and it wasn't, they're really good. They came up with good stuff and kind of understand, after working with us on the middle school, like what we were looking for, I think. So it was a really productive meeting.
Prolusive. And also that meeting, Stephen Embush and then Sandy Allison is also a part of it too. So she's been giving some really nice feedback as well.
Because they probably have comments the admin department, if they were involved. Excellent. Anything further on the high school? Seeing none. Subcommittee activity, I think our sort of legislative advocate scene is pretty well covered by you. Did anybody else meet? Negotiating subcommittee is ongoing. Nothing else? All right. Citizens' comments, seeing no citizens. We'll move on to approval of warrants, donations, and minutes. Ms. Rogers, let's take it away.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following warrants. We have payroll warrant under 2531 PS, payroll under 2531 PV, accounts payable for schools, food service, special ed, all under warrant number 225032. Payroll under 2533 PS. Accounts payable for schools, food service, and special education under warrant 225033. Accounts payable for schools, food services, special ed, WMS project, and two student activity funds, all under 225034, for the amounts listed in your packet.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Rogers, second by Ms. Galavan. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Donations?
I'll make a motion to approve the following gifts and donations to Old Post Road from their PAC, $444.16, to Elm Street from Bay State Textiles, $39, to Boydin from Ded and Savings, $500, and to Walpole Middle School from Box Tops and Bay State Textiles, $95.60. Second.
Motion by Ms. Denizio, second by Ms. Rogers. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Someone like taking minutes? Cheryl, entertain a motion to approve the February 6th, 2024 school committee meeting minutes.
Still moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Rogers, second by Ms. Galavan. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. We had a possible executive session on the agenda. What did we decide? Are we good? Yeah, we don't need that. So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Another.
Do we have another?
Yeah, that was executive session.
All right. I didn't keep flipping. Thank you. Okay, so Cheryl, entertain a motion to approve the February 6th, 2025 executive session meeting minutes,